2021 School Committee Meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the WBCAM website, www.wb-cam.org. Do we get a motion to approve our minutes from our April 12, 2021 meeting? Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's update.
All right. First, I want to just talk about reopening. We have, last time we met, we were just the first day of the middle, senior, high school being back. So I thought it'd be good just to update where we're at now. I've had administrative meeting this morning, checked in, been in the schools, and things are going really well. Really excited about how everything is going forward. Cases have been low over the past two weeks of school. We've had one case each of the last two weeks. So we're still reporting that information out weekly, just to provide people information. But most importantly, the dashboard's updated. Every time we get new cases or people come off the list, we're updating, as well as the close contacts. So it's been great. Again, the teachers, the administrators, the kids, the families, everyone's doing a great job, working together. And the end is near, pushing towards the end. So just very excited to have them all back. But what we do have a video we wanted to show, because we haven't shown in the this forum, but it's the back-to-school video. I went to Mr. Cray, and I asked him, I said, "Hey, can you help me out?" And I asked the teachers, "Can you help us out?" So the teachers did an outstanding job.
Sorry about that.
If you click skip ad, you can.
Skip ads.
There you go.
Skip those. Here we go.
Wait, students are coming back?
Welcome back, everybody!
Welcome back, everyone. We've missed you. We're so excited to have you all back in our building. See you soon.
We're so excited to have you back. Will you next week?
Hi, everyone. Can't wait. You guys are all back here on Monday. Can't wait to see you. I hope you enjoy being here. Passes, and we're so excited to have you guys come back.
Welcome back, everybody. I'm so happy we're all together again.
Hi, everybody. I'm so excited to see everybody on Monday. We opened it. I finally get to have a classroom again, and have students in my classroom, and teach sort of normal, instead of teaching remote. So I'll see everybody Monday.
Welcome back. Welcome back. We're happy to have everyone together again. Welcome back. Don't forget, live again, we're here, we're all cool here. Welcome back. So glad to have you all back, and learning more than ever, learning.
Welcome back.
Hi, everyone. Can't wait to see you all coming back to school, where we can hear the noise of the cafeteria, and seeing all the friendly faces in the hallways. Can't wait to see you on Monday.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, everybody. Have a great year.
Welcome back.
Let's see, rest of Monday.
It'll be fun.
Welcome back, guys.
That's gonna be great to have everyone back in the school.
Welcome back.
See you guys. Yes, I'm here. I'm super excited for all of you all to come back. Do you stay on bubble back? We can't wait to see you all.
Hello, everybody. Welcome back to WBC.
Welcome back, students. We're so happy to see you.
I like to laugh about it like that, but I see most of you. It's most that I don't see a seal this entire year. I actually look over to what your face looks like. So, see you soon.
Welcome back. Welcome back, Wildcats. Good to see you all again.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back, boys and girls. I'm so excited to see you, and hopefully we're gonna get to enjoy these outside places, so we can learn. And if you're in my home room, or you're in my main, I can't wait to see you all be back in. We'll see you very soon.
Welcome back, Wildcats.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, everybody.
Hi, everyone. Welcome back. We can't wait to see you.
Hey, guys. We're excited to see you guys.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, everybody.
Hey, welcome back, guys. Looking really forward to seeing everybody all together all at once. Go to the big.
Hi, welcome back. We're so excited to see you. We miss all of you, having you in school. Looking forward to continue to date with you.
Welcome back, students. Happy to have you all here again.
Oh, welcome back, students. I missed you with all my heart. I can't wait to see you all as well.
Welcome back, everybody.
Welcome back, everybody. I can't wait to see you all today.
Welcome back to school. Welcome back, everyone. We're so glad to have you back.
Welcome back. Have fun.
Welcome back, students. Great to see you in the middle of the evening.
Hi, everyone. Can't wait till everyone's back to welcome you and have a great rest of the year.
Nice to see you finally show up.
You're not gonna really return.
So excited to see you guys. Can't wait for the twelfth.
Welcome back.
Hi, we're so glad to have you guys back. We can't wait for you guys to come in here.
Welcome back, everybody.
Welcome back, everybody. We're thrilled to have you in here. It'll be so nice to see all of your masked, smiling faces.
Hi, everybody. This is Massa Elizabeth, and I'll be the one helping you take care of things. If you need anything, you get hurt, and we are looking forward to having all of you back together. See you soon.
Hey, West Bridgewater Wildcats. We can't wait to have you all back here at school. It's been a long time since March 2020. We're so excited to see you.
So again, huge thank you to Mr. Cray and his crew for putting that all together in very short notice. One of those things sounds like a really good idea until I tell them, they say, "Oh, let's get going." So glad to have everyone back.
Mr. Bodwell, thank you too for spearheading it. Thank you to Mr. Cray. And actually, Mr. Cray's little piece in there about the technology problems that sometimes we had with the students, that was kind of highlighted by all our contestants in the Mr. WB contest, which was last month, which I think was really well done. So it's been a nice job all the way around. So thank you very much. Thank you to Mr. Cray, and thank you to the, all the kids that performed in the Mr. WB.
All right. I asked Ms. Hamel to give an update for Fall Two and maybe a little Spring. And I just want to thank Jen for all she's done for our athletic program. Not only does she bring the excitement to the student athletes, but she gets them games and practices and keeps things rolling. So, Taylor, thank you for all you do for us student athletes.
Oh, you got it, Mr. Bodwell. I absolutely love it, and I wouldn't change a thing. I feel so lucky to be a Wildcat, you know, as always. But I certainly want to wish everyone, you know, good evening and welcome. I have to say, you know, thank you to the school committee, Superintendent Bodwell, Ms. Page, you know, and our community, parents, students. There's so many people to thank to keep this all going. And I, you know, I'm so grateful, and it's so fun to see all the kids out there. So I, without all of us, those things wouldn't happen. So it certainly, you know, takes a team, and we have a team here at West Bridgewater, and it's fun every day. So I'm super excited. Before I share a little quick, you know, recap, I also want to say, you know, it's awesome. I mean, here we go. We are standing here, starting our fourth season of this year. So we're starting our spring season, which includes, you know, baseball, softball, boys tennis, girls tennis, and boys and girls spring track and field. So it's really cool. You know, we've been able to offer every sport here at West Bridgewater as, you know, if it were a non-COVID year. So that's pretty awesome. I mean, that is great. Things may be shuffled, or the timing may be a little different, but honestly, kudos to everyone to make this happen. So it's such a pleasure. And gosh, it's great to see the kids out there now, heading into our fourth season, our spring season. So with that being said, we had our Fall Two season. In our Fall Two season, we had boys ice hockey, winter track football, and cheer. So I was able to kind of put a little, you know, synopsis of how the season went. First, we had our boys ice hockey team. Our boys ice hockey team is a co-op with Southeastern and Bristol Plymouth. They're called the Hawks. So it was really great. Every, the teams came together in the MAC. We had six total teams that included West Bridgewater, and those teams were Upper Cape, South Shore Evoque, Tri-County, Cape Cod Tech, and Diamond. So, pretty great. You know, it's taken, you know, a little bit of time, kind of getting everybody started and getting some of those teams out there playing. So it was really great to see our boys ice hockey team back on the ice. And they did awesome. So they were 10-0, and they had their last game versus Tri-County, and they did awesome. They won. It was awesome. Aiden Wells, you know, had the winning goal to put them ahead, actually keep them ahead to win three to two. So certainly, exciting season, happy for all the kids, and certainly want to wish all those seniors the best of luck. As we had in, we had our winter track, in our Fall Two season as well. Certainly, definitely a change from what they're used to seeing. They were virtual, they call them virtual track meets. They participated in the Southeast Conference, which again was Brockton, BR, Durfee, New Bedford, and a missing one. Hang on a moment, let me see. BR, Dartmouth, New Bedford, Brockton, Durfee, and then West Bridgewater. So it was a little different. I mean, there wasn't actual physical teams out there, but they did a superb job. The, all the athletes managed to compete hard, they had a great time, and they had a nice season wrap-up with a ceremony for the seniors that organized by Coach Smith and several of the team members. I have to say a huge shout-out to Coach Allison, Coach Smith, and Coach Rule. They all did an amazing job in unprecedented times. Like I said, they made it fun out there, they were, music playing, and the kids were competitive. Every meet, every week. So the meets were once a week. So from Coach Smith, who was our winter girls' track coach, our girls' team scores when compared to scores of the rest of the SEC league, a bigger school league than we normally perform in, placed us in first by a significant margin, which essentially means we were the league champions. Many of our girls had truly outstanding performances throughout the season in our league championship meet. We had six out of the top 10 100-meter runners in 400-meter run, 100-meter hurdles, long jump, and shot put. We had three out of the 10 top finishers. We had the first-place finishers in the following events, the 100-meters, one-mile long jump, 400-meter, four-by-four, 400-meter relay as well. Some highlights from Coach Allison, the boys' team led by multi-talented senior Landon Crowley, who posted times unmatched in school history in the 100 meters, as well as excelling in the 400. Madsen Anderson clocked a personal best of four minutes and 35 seconds in the mile, amazing, and two minutes and two seconds in the 800 meters, the latter one of the fastest times in the state this season. Sam Souza stepped up to run very competitive league-wide times in the 400, and also led the team in the shot put. Several others improved their results in the sprints, long jump, and distance events. Congrats to everyone, and best of luck to, best of luck to those seniors as well. And I'll just repeat myself, they did a fabulous job. It was a lot of fun. I had an opportunity to go out there and hang out with the kids, do some announcing. So superb all around. From Coach Kogler, we had the 2021 West Bridgewater football team had a great season, finishing four and two. The season was challenging for the team with all the restrictions and the schedule changes, but everyone was happy to be out there playing. The team opened the season with a win against Nantucket, very exciting. After back-to-back losses against Blue Hills and Taunton, the team rallied to beat two straight undefeated teams, beating Tri-County 21-12 and Bristol Plymouth 45-6. The team finished the season beating our Thanksgiving Day rival Southeastern 28-6 to reclaim the Battle for Route 106 trophy. A very exciting season for the kids. Coach Kogler did have some, you know, was challenging with COVID, and they had to kind of, each week was different, but they did, again, the kids did a fabulous job. They rolled with it, and a fabulous season. He also wanted to thank the 12 seniors for keeping the program together during the pandemic and helping to increase our roster size. We look for, looking towards a more normal Fall 2021, for sure. And then I just wanted to do a shout-out to our cheer team. I wanted to thank the cheer team, who's led by Coach Kaitlyn Pennington. You know, cheer had record, record numbers this season, and compared to the past few years, they not only provided school spirit at the football games, but they also attended a track meet as well. Their constant support and encouragement to our WB athletes is a testament to our coach and the amazing young women who put forth their full effort every day. We look forward to continuing to see the program grow, and we wish all of the seniors best of luck. Kaitlyn, Coach Pennington does a wonderful job as well. Honestly, they work so hard in the gym every day, and they are always there to pump up our athletes. So kudos to Coach Pennington and her team. A little bit of update, we, I usually like to announce Fall or Enterprise All Scholastics. We're still working on those. The Enterprise combined the Fall season, which happened in the fall, and then there were some teams that could not play at that time. So we had this Fall Two season, as I was just talking about. So those Fall Enterprise All Scholastics should be announced soon, and as soon as they are, I will get that information out there. I just wanted to, you know, kind of looking forward again. So proud of all of our student athletes, coaches, you know, thankful to our parents, WB community, and everyone here. It was a great Fall season, and rolling right on to our Spring, and I look forward to it. We start this week for Spring. We have a track meet on Wednesday, I believe tennis on Thursday, and then tennis and a varsity softball game on Friday. So very exciting. Look forward to it. You know, we look forward to seeing the kids back out there again. So once again, as I said, looking forward, believe it or not, I am starting to think about Fall sports, and I'm hoping to open that registration up sometime in June. As soon as I have more information about that, I will get that out to everyone. Also, just for the sixth graders, that'll be coming up to the high school. We look forward to it, and I will get that information out to you as well. Some of those Fall sports that are offered for the grades seven through 12 are girls, boys, and, girls and boys cross-country, golf, boys soccer, girls soccer, field hockey, volleyball, and cheer. Football is for grades nine through 12. Also, just dates to think about, preseason football can begin Friday, August 20, and all other sports can begin on Monday, August 23. So if you're starting to think about summer and summer plans, those are a couple of dates to think about. Also, we will do an athletic informational night, and once I get that information out or that date, I will get that out to families and students. A great opportunity to get some information about the athletic program, and you will also have a chance to meet the Fall coaches. So please know I also use Twitter for information, getting that out there. Please, you can follow me on Twitter @WBSHSAthletics. But as always, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, jhamel@wbridgewater.com. Love being a Wildcat. Let's go, spring season.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. Next, Mrs. Page. You want to talk about some middle, senior, high school events? I want to, again, give credit to Mrs. Page for all she's done to promote and work through the pandemic to allow our kids these opportunities at the middle, senior, high school, and throughout the district. We're doing the best we can, and she continues to push and be an advocate for kids. So thank you.
Thank you. So the spring has been great, because I feel like we're finally able to start having some of our traditional events. Mr. WB being the first. You know, I really need to say a public thank you to Mrs. Lawler, Mrs. Flynn, and Mrs. Pennington for really doing a great job for Mr. WB. It was amazing. I think most of us in this room saw it. The kids were just fabulous. And we were able to also livestream it, which I think has been one of the positives of COVID, if we can find any, that we're able to, maybe if you have people who are, you know, far away, that they're able to still see their grandchildren there. Maybe sons, daughters be able to participate in these activities. So it's great. And a great job, Ms. Hamel, where are you, right there, and Mr. Sylvain as the emcees of the event. They can't wait to do it again next year, I've been told. So it's been great. And the other social event, which we were able to do, which I know, again, I said it, and I'll say it again, that we give a huge shout-out to our senior class advisors and the senior class officers for really pushing to make the prom happen. And though not completely traditional, we were able to hold the grand march. We were able to, you know, crown the king and queen. And I will tell you, I think we should publicly state that congratulations to our queen, Sarah Hodeman, and her court, Brianna Honore, Peyton Doherty, and Ellie Smith, and our king, Mr. Ben Smith, and his court, Charles G., Marino Tacolo, and Connor Murphy. I know for the kids, it was really important to be able to do this tradition, which they love. So we were really happy that we were able to do that. Another great thing for our chorus members, we were able to hold a concert. And I give Ms. Kendall a lot of credit that she was able to figure out how to do it. So we had it out in the courtyard. So the students were, you know, at 10 feet apart, singing their songs, and the parents came, and grandparents came, and they sat, you know, they could bring chairs, or they were out on blankets. So I have to say, it could be something, you know, moving forward to continue, because it was, it was real, the rain held off, so that was awesome. So it was a great night for those kids, because they work hard, and they've had a struggle this year, because they haven't been able to even sing inside for, not that, you know, they've only been doing it probably inside, able to do it for a couple, six weeks or so. So I was really happy for them. And then we were able to hold in the gymnasium our NHS induction. And we brought the students back who were inducted virtually last year, and we brought them together with the group that was inducted this year, so that they could, you know, be in person in front of their parents, to parents be able to come and see them get inducted and be recognized for the hard work that they do. They take rigorous courses, they're good citizens. There's a lot that goes into being on it, being on NHS, and so we want to publicly be able to do that for those kids. That was great. And then unbelievably, graduation's fast approaching, three weeks away. So we have a lot of things going on with the seniors coming up. We, last Thursday, with some staff, teacher staff, we went around and put signs, the senior signs, in all the homes of all the seniors. We conquered, and divide and conquered. So it was great. I think last year it took us nine hours. I think this year it was about an hour and a half, because we were able to enlist more people. So it, and it was fun. And we hope that the families and the seniors enjoy those signs. We, Senior Week will be the week of March 24 through the 28. The seniors' last day of class is Friday, the 21. On that last day, we will do our yearbook dedication in the morning, followed by the Fire Department, West Bridgewater Fire Department, Officer Pope, one of our teachers, Leah O'Brien, whose sister was involved in being, you know, hit by a drunk driver. So she's, she's going to talk to our seniors, as well as Julie Dietrichson is going to do some CPR. So lots, the fire will talk to our students about if they're going off to live on their own, or they're going to school and living off campus, the importance of making sure there's fire detectors, and, you know, what to do if there's a fire. Officer Pope is going to be talking to our students about social media, and just being mindful of when you graduate from college, you'll be looking for employment places. So you just kind of reiterate those things of, you know, what's important, and how to be smart, though having fun. And then we follow that with our annual car parade and cookout for the seniors. So that will be on the last day. So there's a lot going on that day, and hopefully it'll be great for the students. Wednesday, the 26, we're having our awards night here. It will also be in the gymnasium, so that we can get all students in here. We won't be able to all fit in the auditorium. So we'll have that with our two guests, so that the parents can come and see their sons and daughters receive those awards and scholarships. On Thursday, we're holding the senior reception at the West Bridgewater Barrett's, and that's where all our seniors will get their yearbooks, and be able to reminisce, and laugh, and sign each other's yearbooks and so forth. And that's been a tradition that they love every year. Also, on that Thursday, we're going to be going doing the Senior Walk. We will go over to Rozelle. I think we'll start with Lucine's. We'll get the buses. We'll all hop on, go over to Rozelle first. And I know the kids love it, Mrs. Goulet had said, as well as all the teachers, because it's fun to remember and say, "Oh, my gosh, I remember him or her." And then we'll come back, do Howard and the Spring Street School. So that's set for Thursday morning. And then Friday, everyone, please pray for nice weather. The 28th, we'll be holding the graduation out on the athletic field. The guidance right now from the state is that we're able to have six guests, which is two more than last year, so that's great. We were able, you know, we're going through some setups of how we're going to do it, but it was important for our seniors to be able to sit together. So we went out last week, and we realized that we can all sit at three feet apart, because the distance on the outside is three feet. And so they can all sit together on the stands and look out to the families. So that's going to be a nice thing for them. Because it was important for them to sit together. And I believe that is it for the high school. You're welcome.
And finally, Mrs. Giannis is going to talk about some summer programs that we're looking to offer within the district, from elementary all up to the secondary level, some opportunities that we have to address potentially some learning loss, and also maybe some social, emotional needs have not been met due to the pandemic.
So as Mr. Bodwell said, we'd like to offer a Summer Wildcat Academy to accelerate student learning, help close some gaps, prevent summer slide, and for credit recovery at the middle, senior, high school. Courses program will run pending grant funding. The dates we have decided upon are July 12 to July 22, and then again, August 9 to the 19, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30 for the elementary, and 8 to 11 for the high school. It will be open for two grades, one to 12. Those would be the incoming students for the Fall of 2021. Open to all students. We may look into splitting the cost of a nurse with Kathy Marble and her program, because they overlap, those dates overlap with the ESY program. Grade-level groups, we'd like to group one and two, three to four, five and six, seven and eight, and then high school into two groups, one for math and SEL, and the other for ELA and SEL, and then the credit recovery. ELA, math, and social, emotional wellness will be our focus. The groups ideally would have one teacher and one IA in the elementary level, but that's fluid depending on the needs of the student and how we group them. We're going to strive for groups of no more than 10 students, but no less than five. Kathy Quinn will allow students in grades one to six to attend surround care after the program ends at 11:30, if parents need that extra support, and a prorated charge for those students will take place. Grades one to six, we'll, we will use the SEL DESL lesson plans. That's part of the CASL alignment, and they're a nationally-normed SEL universal screener, which the teachers at Rozelle and Howard are familiar with using. But they'll get some more training on that. And it offers hundreds of strength-based approaches to help students with SEL programs and lesson plans. I'd like to use Storyworks and DynaMath for the elementary supplement. Those are two curriculums. Howard uses Storyworks now, and DynaMath is another supplement from Scholastic. We'd like to use project-based learning and minimal tech usage in the early grades. Mrs. Goulet and I feel that's a good thing to do after all the tech we've been exposing these kids to this year. For the credit recovery, Mrs. Page and I are going to meet this week, along with Mr. Pina, to discuss what we want that to look like. And attendance at that will be strictly enforced, because if they miss, other districts do that. If you miss one, you're no longer in the credit recovery program. So the survey was sent to the teachers last week to gauge their participation interest, and I would like their responses back by May 14. We've already got 11 teachers interested in helping out. And the survey to the parents to gauge their interest in whether their sons and daughters would like to attend will go out sometime this week. We have two versions, a three-day version priced out, and a four-day version. The ideal one would be the four-day. And that's about it. Anybody have questions?
A lot of work into it so far. Sounds great.
Sounds great.
This is something I'm really excited about, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Bodwell. And Mrs. Page did go through some of the student representative items.
And Mrs. Goulet, do you want to read through the Spring Street and Rozelle? And I can take the Howard if you want after. Is there, is that a copy over there?
All right. At the Spring Street School, spring is in the air. Three schools were busy planting seeds and watching their plants grow. They also experienced the butterfly life cycle and released the newly hatched butterflies last week. Kindergarten classrooms have had many new visitors over the last few weeks. Our kinders are excited to watch tadpoles grow into frogs, butterflies hatch, worms, and ladybugs is the highlight of the building. Rozelle McDonald. Student council hosted an awesome fundraiser to support our collaboration with Blankets of Hope and the Suitman as we strive to help the homeless. We sold 613 tickets, raising $1,226. All raffle tickets were entered into a drawing and the winning ticket was pulled last week. The winner, Jack Waller, will be enjoying his cool ride to school on a fire truck next week. We would like to send a big congratulations to Anita LaBrack and Mary Mahoney on their retirements at the end of the year. Mrs. LaBrack has touched the lives of many of our littlest Wildcats in her 24 years at Spring Street School. Mrs. Mahoney has worked with the McDonald's School of First Graders for the past 25 years. Sorry, I can't believe they're going to be leaving. We wish them the best in their next journey.
Howard School is excited to have spring arrive. Outdoor classes are happening across all grade levels and the kids see the finish line in the near future. Sixth grade is excited to welcome a two-day nature's classroom program to the school next week. Half the students will go Monday and Tuesday and half will go Thursday and Friday. Additionally, the sixth graders will make their first trip to the Middle Senior High School for a tour on Wednesday. We're also excited to schedule a moving on ceremony for Tuesday, May 8th. Details coming shortly. And grade four is excited to welcome the third graders from the Rozelle McDonald on Thursday and Friday, March 20th and to May 20th and 21st. Additionally, they're planning a COVID-safe end-of-the-year activities for both those grades as well. So lots of good stuff going on.
Thank you very much. On to business, superintendent's evaluation. Mr. Bodwell.
All right. I'm going to pass these along. Take one and pass it along. What you're getting is a number of things I've written up to try to provide you with some information on both of my goals and on the four standards and the 16 indicators in the superintendent's rubric. I wanted to save some trees, so I created a shared doc, excuse me, a shared folder where I put in about 50-plus documents that you can review. So that's been shared with you as well. That goes to the evidence. But I've referred to the evidence also in that document. So you should be able to kind of go back and forth. And, you know, I'll go through a little bit of my goals and so forth. But I have to say that, you know, this has been an incredible year for me with great learning experiences. I can't tell you how many times people have said to all of us, you know, wow, what a year it's been and what a year to start. And honestly, I don't think I could have had a better year because it's provided me with experiences I never would have had prior to my first year. So I think we've all taken the good out of this. I think we've, we've talked about some of those things tonight. We'll be doing an end of year survey to gather more information. But I think this year will become a true loss if we don't take some things out of it that are positive. And also appreciate some of the things that we've lost. And we're hearing about those as well tonight. In terms of goals, I'll just quickly go over the goals that are detailed in there. But my first goal for student learning was to monitor, evaluate, and support the reopening of schools. That's kind of a, a summary of it. Evidence and information that I provided, the reopening plan that we worked tirelessly on all summer, it seems, from July 1 through September. We created a supplemental COVID handbook that was presented to the school committee. Numerous COVID-19 procedures and protocols that were reviewed and updated regularly. Various school committee presentations that provided information. Numerous, maybe too many to, to mention, surveys that parents completed. And we've got great information from it. Professional development plans, administrative meetings, MOA documents that were created, iReady data to evaluate how our students are doing at the elementary level and our Wildcat Virtual Learning Academy. So a lot went into the reopening and a lot of hard work was done by all of our administrators, teachers, students, and families. And it really was a collaborative effort. Everyone worked really hard. My professional practice goal was to support and monitor the administrative team in the district. I really felt that it was important to get into the school buildings as much as I could. It was very different this year. It's harder to walk in and out of classrooms, but we still did our best to try to get in. I really enjoyed my foreshadow days at the schools. I, I just thought they were really thoroughly packed with information and experiences for me. We have weekly administrative meetings, monthly administrative team meetings. And I'm part of a new superintendent induction program sponsored by the M A S S, which we meet three times virtually each month, plus our smaller cohort teams and individually with my coach. And all have kind of led to help me in this transition in my first year. And the third goal was a district improvement goal to establish and provide effective communication. Again, people will probably be glad not to see so many emails, but we are trying to update as often as we can through emails, postings on social media, Twitter, Facebook, and our website. We, Mr. Collins did a nice job creating the COVID-19 page on our website, which included the dashboard. We had superintendent coffee hours once a month. Again, the surveys. I created a superintendent entry plan. And I continue to hopefully be as visible as possible at school events. And my best part of my days is morning and afternoon at the Spring Street School welcoming and seeing the kids off on the bus. Truly an awesome part of the day. But actually, I take that back. The best part of the day now is lunch there because I can see them without their masks on. And I'm like, oh, all right, now I can recognize you. So it's, you know, I think communication is always important. And again, a huge, a huge debt of gratitude to our other administrators for providing great communication throughout the entire year. I also went through the standards and indicators of effective administrative leadership practice, the rubric that you'll be evaluating me on. That's where I completed the written narrative that notes evidence for each of the four standards and the 16 indicators. So I provided information on each of those. I referenced each elements that fall under the indicators, provide information and evidence. And I documented where, showed a kind of the crossover of where that evidence is located in the Google folder. And I also provide you some possible goals for me for 2021, '22. And certainly available for any questions or comments on any of the information provided and/or evidence. And if there's other stuff you would like to see, I can absolutely get that for you as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bodwell. For the committee, does Tuesday, May 25th, give everybody enough time to go through and make some adjustments? We could email this back to Maureen on that date. Then I could sit down with Maureen and we can compile everything and have it ready, have a, a little, I can't think of the word, sorry. We'll go through it again at our, our June meeting with everybody's notes and things together. Does that work for everybody?
Yep, that'll be fine.
Thanks for making.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. FY '22 budget. Mr. Bodwell.
All right. We felt it was important to provide the committee and the public just a little bit of a review of where we're at with our budget. There's lots of information that we presented. We tried to summarize some of it and really just touch on the most important parts of it as we move forward. I think, Mrs. Hume, if you want to go up to the.
Sorry, I didn't, I slacked.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Again, when we look at our budget priorities, we want to certainly provide programming and opportunities for all of our students. We want to proactively address social and emotional, mental health and academic needs of all of our students. And we want to support continued growth for all of our educators and support staff. Those are our driving priorities when looking at the budget. When we build our budget, it is continuous in terms of looking at those priorities. We look at the priorities. We look at our district goals, our administrative goals, and our teacher goals. We look at the social emotional health and well-being of everyone in our schools. I think that's really important. And certainly, we need to look at the achievement to make sure all of our students are achieving at the highest level and providing supports for them so they can achieve at the highest level. Again, it goes full circle all the time. We're always going back and forth to look at what those biggest priorities may be. When you look at what our total operating budget, our proposed budget is $16,790,369. And we're requesting from the town $14,431 and $684. There is a difference. We'll talk about that in a minute due to the school contributions that we make. Funding sources, this is a kind of an accumulation of over a few years. It's not exactly this amount year to year. But on average, the funding sources, 60% comes from West Bridgewater, town contributions, tax revenues. About 25% each year is through state funding, which is the Chapter 70 funds. And then 15% on average are the school contributions, school choice grants in various revolving accounts. And this just provides you a little bit of a closer look at what that 15% is, or just over $2 million of school contributions, which makes up that gap between the 16 and the 14 million or so. Again, over 1.5 million is from school choice. I've mentioned before, in other means, we have the highest number of school choice applications that we've ever had, which is a credit to everyone in the district. We have grants, special education grants and other grants. The total of a $300,000 circuit breaker, which is a reimbursement, the special ed, once we go over a certain threshold. And then various revolving accounts that make up the remainder. One of the things we want to highlight and, and we have before, but really drive it home is special education. It is, it's our, it is our biggest, most unpredictable cost. Every district is responsible for providing a free and appropriate education to all special education students aged 3 to 22. And their individual educational plans dictate what those services are and they're determined by their educational team. Again, we can't predict where those placements may be and/or who may move in and out of the district. In addition to program costs or tuition costs, we also must provide transportation to the placements. So that's another important factor. And again, 1.2 of our student population is placed in an outside, out-of-district placement. But that cost is substantial. It's over $2 million, or about 12% of our anticipated FY '22 budget. Now, circuit breaker, which we refer to as part of our school contributions, does provide some money back. But really, the majority of the funding needs to come from the individual district. And again, we have 17 students who make up that 1.2%. They fall into three different categories. And you can look at what those categories are. You can see some examples of potential placements and the range of costs of those programs. And like all things, every year, those program costs will go up. They're not going down, so they're going to go up. And again, these are places that meet the needs of our students. So they, there are appropriate placements for them. Okay, that's what a team decided, and that's where they are placed. And transportation, as we all know, can be very expensive. Depends on the student's needs and the distance traveled. For FY '22, the costs range from $12,000 to $80,000 per student. And these, again, could change at a moment's notice if we have someone move in, which we, you know, we do have throughout the year. This just shows a representation of special ed class over the years from FY '14 to '22. And there's a fairly consistent growth in special education class. Now, this is not unique to West Bridgewater, but it's important to show, again, it's an unpredictable cost that we do not have control over. So when we look at our budget, we look at what the town appropriated in FY '21, what the town, what we're asking for, for appropriation for FY '22. There is a $665,000 difference in those appropriations, which comes out to a 4.8% increase. Then you add in our school choice grants and revolving accounts, which are the school contributions, that gives us the bottom line number of just over, almost 17 million. And just to break down those increases for FY '22, our special ed costs are $182,560, which is 1.3%. This is a decrease from last year. Last year, I believe we were about $266,000 over. So we have worked hard and this marble deserves credit for working responsibly, but also then meeting the needs of our kids. So there's only so much work you can do. A lot of it's pretty prescribed. The cost of living raises, the contractual obligation is 1.6% or $222,000. The step and track is estimated $250,000, about 1.8%. For those who don't know, a step and track is every year a teacher gains a year of experience. They go down on the salary scale. That's the step. And if they increase their education, they're moving over. So that's the track increase. So it's concealed, they could go down and over depending on their years of service and their education level. And then there was a small net increase of a little over $11,000 that can be attributed to increase in various contracts and so forth within the budget. So some potential cuts that we want to discuss. As we all know, the school committee did approve the FY '22 budget in March. On April 7th, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend a reduction of $222,000 to the school committee's approved budget. The following day, on April 8th, the Finance Committee voted to concur with that. And then we know that there is a town meeting a week from tonight where the legis, the, the public, the legislative body of West Bridgewater can either vote to approve or not the budget. And if, you know, following the school, the town meeting, if the budget is cut, then it'll be dependent on the school committee to readjust their budget, the appropriate amount, and make any cuts that are necessary to stay within that budget. What are some of the effects on West Bridgewater? Well, any cuts will impact students for sure. We're going to talk about in a few minutes that we don't have a lot of areas to cut that won't directly affect students, and that's unfortunate. It will definitely have a negative effect on the educational programming. It certainly will affect extracurricular activities. There is a likelihood of increasing fees within the district to offset some of those cuts. And it could decrease the likelihood of parents choosing to send their child here, their children here. If that happens, if we drop down below last year's total, we're losing $5,000 per student. We're never going to admit students in to classes that will increase our class size to a point where it's not educationally beneficial to all students. But if we can't fill those spots because they don't want to come here, then we're going to have to make up that $1.5 million difference. Cuts right now, we're having, you know, we're, we're meeting the needs of our students through their IP process, but cuts could impact that. And cuts will decrease our per pupil expenditure, which will widen the gap between West Bridgewater and other communities. And we'll talk a little bit more about what per pupil expenditure is in a moment.
So one of the things that we wanted to do with this presentation is really start comparing apples to apples. When you look at a budget number of $16 million and a town appropriation of $14 million, you're really comparing to other town departments. You're comparing apples to watermelons. And so by using per pupil expenditure, we can look at what our district is doing in comparison to other districts in the state. So what per pupil expenditure is? It's essentially how much a district spends per student. So it's, it takes the total final operating costs and divides it by our number of students, including in-district students and students in out-of-district placements. including in-district students and students in out-of-district placements. Why is PPE a good metric? Well, I think we all know, if we're going to go buy a new pair of shoes, we're not going to buy the cheapest pair of shoes that we can find. We're going to carefully consider, and we're going to look for quality while trying to save money while we can. PPE is exactly that. It's a global resource variable that shows strong and consistent relationship with achievement. When you look at the research, 11 to 1, it shows that PPE is, it leads to an increase in student achievement. And the way that that works is that PPE, or funding our schools, not only increases quality, we get more quality from our teachers in ability, education, and experience, but it decreases quantity, meaning more teachers means lower class sizes. And time after time after time, when you look at the research over decades, it shows that by having quality teachers and small class sizes, our students will achieve more. So just a few of the studies, and I'm not going to run through all of these, these are just some of the facts that you can find when you research PPE. I'm going to emphasize the bottom one, though. Increasing PPE by 22% across the 12 years that our students are in school is enough to close the educational gap between low-income and non-core students. So when we think about why it's important to fund our schools, we're really thinking about our students and giving them an opportunity to achieve past high school. So we're going to look at per pupil expenditure in West Bridgewater, comparing to, using three different comparisons. The first is all districts in Massachusetts. So if you look at the 404 districts in Massachusetts for fiscal year '19, West Bridgewater was 23rd from the bottom, which means there are only 22 in fiscal year '19, 22 other districts spending less per students than we are. In fiscal year '20, West Bridgewater actually dropped to 8th from the bottom. Now, not all districts were reporting that year, but I believe there were only two, I think two.
There was a few, but when looked at this, had not completed their data input, they were still above us in fiscal year '19, so it's reasonable to think that most of them still would have been ahead.
So, then we compared to, we closed the circle a little bit, and we compared to Southeast Massachusetts. If you look at the south shore of Massachusetts, for fiscal year '19, we were 5th from the bottom. And then for fiscal year '20, we were 4th from the bottom. Now, what you'll see in a moment is that over time, we would expect that PPE would increase as we fund our schools. Given cost of living, that number should rise. And so for us to be going on a downward trend is not the direction that we are hoping for. On the next slide, you're going to see, this is Southeast Massachusetts, so we have 60 bars here, and there we are towards the bottom. And this ranges anywhere for, from right around $12,000 per student to upwards of $22,500 from Adipoyet. So we're quite low, and you will be able to see the actual numbers in just a moment. This is fiscal year '19, and then fiscal year '20, you see that we drop a little bit further down on the bar. So here's just a closer look at PPE in Southeast Massachusetts. So you can see the difference between West Bridgewater and the average of the Southeast region. We are $2,369.37 lower. That was for fiscal year '19. And then in fiscal year '20, we were $2,725.36 lower. So what happened is it, from '19 to '20, the Southeast region increased while we actually decreased. And what that equates to is a net PPE change for West Bridgewater students of 350, just under $356. So we then closed that circle even further, and if you look at surrounding districts, so if you think about West Bridgewater as the core of an onion, and you look at that first ring, you consider all of the towns that are actually bordering West Bridgewater. So we have Bridgewater, or Bridgewater-Ranham, East Bridgewater, Easton, and Brockton. Now, we all know that we don't compare to Brockton. We're really comparing apples to oranges there. But if we really look at what the other districts around us are doing, we can then widen that circle, or widen to the next string of the onion, and you go out further to Abington, Taunton, Halifax, go in the other direction, Sharon, Avon, Norton. And you can see that when you look for fiscal year '19, there's only one district lower than we are in this area, and that would be East Bridgewater. But for fiscal year '20, you see that because our PPE dropped, we are actually lower than East Bridgewater for last year, which, again, this is not the direction that we really want to be moving in. So when you look at the average PPE change from fiscal year '18 to fiscal year '20, you see that West Bridgewater, we've actually gone downward in three years by $627 and change, while the state average has gone up just over $1,000. So when we look at that net loss, it's over $1,600 for each of our students compared to the state average across three years. So, we looked a little bit further. Again, one could argue, we're really comparing apples to oranges when you compare to districts around us. The DESI website has a really neat tool. It's called District Analysis and Review Tools. And what it does is it gives us a list of districts in the entire state that compare to ours. They're most similar to West Bridgewater in terms of grade span, total enrollment, special populations, and some of these districts, I'll be honest, I've never even heard of before, but DESI has the data, and they are telling us that here is where we fall in comparison to these other districts. And I'll just read these, I'll read these off for you. So of course, West Bridgewater with that little maroon bar on the bottom, followed by Auburn, Lunenburg, Swansea, Tantasquaw, Hamden, Old Rochester, Milis, Silver Lake, Mount Greylock, and Lennox. So this is fiscal year '19. And then in fiscal year '20, you can actually see that gap widen as the DART districts continue to increase and West Bridgewater kind of stays steady. So in a closer look, comparing us, again, apples to apples, you can see that the difference between the DART districts and West Bridgewater is just over $2,000. And then in fiscal year '20, we are up over $2,500. So that gap continues to widen. On this next slide, you'll see, this is the trend over six years between where we are and what the five closest DART districts are. We determined that these are the five closest districts based on not just enrollment, but the population of the town, the town size. We also looked at property values, and we looked at average income per capita. So these five districts, the cross-section of those towns really does look very similar to West Bridgewater. So you can see, over the six-year time span, West Bridgewater is that blue line at the bottom with the triangles. We start to kind of catch up in fiscal year '18, and then we drop down again to be the lowest of those six districts in fiscal year '20. Now, here's how we compare to the surrounding towns, the ones that actually border West Bridgewater. You can see Brockton is that green line at the top. They continue to rise. You can see all of them really have an upward trend. Easton is the orange line, and it's worth noting that in fiscal year '18, we'd actually met the per pupil expenditure of Easton, but as Easton continued to rise, you can see West Bridgewater continues to fall. Bridgewater-Ranham is the yellow line, and then East Bridgewater is that red line on the bottom that slowly caught up and then surpassed us in fiscal year '20. So some of the key findings, when we really looked at the six-year trend, is that we've been steadily declining in fiscal year, since fiscal year '18, and that's not a direction that we want to be moving in. And of the DESI DART districts selected for comparison across these six years, we've maintained the lowest PPE across five of the six years. As we discussed, of the surrounding districts, West Bridgewater is overall trending downward, while the rest of our districts around us are going upwards. This proposed budget cut of $222,000 will further decrease the projected growth in fiscal year '22 by $160.87 for our students, which I think we can all agree is not a direction that we want to go, given the progress or the regression that we have made over the last six years. So this fiscal year '22 budget, as proposed by the school committee, as passed in March, really supports deliberate and fiscally responsible growth to support the district's immediate If you'd like more information on per pupil expenditure, it's really easy to kind of get lost in the charts, but all of the information is on the DESI website.
So we also wanted to look at services that were provided on each of the districts and what we offer for services. I think that's one of our areas that we continue to say, you know, when we look at making cuts, we don't have the place to really cut in our district. We don't have what people flock in our district. So we want to compare West Bridgewater with a few other districts, some near, some far, or further away, but also, you know, Carver is a very similar district to ours. Milis is one of our DART districts, and Mashpee, again, if you look at student enrollment, very similar. So we looked at student-teacher ratio. We did note the PPE numbers in FY '19 and '20. And then we wanted to look at some areas that we feel would be good places to compare, districts that have a higher per pupil expenditure, and see what they had in these service areas. So we looked at building administration. We looked at mental health professionals. And again, building administration, you can see we are the lowest, and those are the that, if we're the lowest or tied for lowest, we indicated that shaded in red. Again, building administration helps with management of students. It helps put more eyes on kids throughout the day, more oversight, more curriculum and instruction with the evaluation and observations. Mental health in West Bridgewater, we have our three school psychologists, one in each building, but you can see the much greater number in other districts that address the mental health needs of their students. Behavioral support staff, we are fairly adequately staffed in that category, which is great. In terms of reading and math specialists in West Bridgewater, we have one reading specialist that services three different buildings. We have no math specialist in the district. We have no reading and/or math specialist at the middle, senior, high school to address those learning gaps and learning needs. Speech and language specialists, we have two in the district, and I will tell you, after meeting with them recently, we are really understaffed there, trying to gather, to meet the needs of our students, so that really need to have an increase there to service students in their IEPs. We have caseloads in the 40s of, you know, with each staff member. Occupational therapists, again, at or below the others. Physical therapy. Special ed team chairs, we don't have any. Again, that is more oversight in special education process. Instructional technology, also low. And then we also pulled information right from the DESI website in terms of funding that is provided for both professional development and instructional equipment and technology. And you can see where we're at over, you know, the same, you know, schools comparing apples to apples. So again, we felt it's important to compare districts. We'll look at other districts as well, but these seem to be pretty good representative districts for us to compare information. When, again, they're the similar profile, similar characteristics. On average, West Bridgewater has 13 fewer staff members in these highlighted areas than comparison districts. We know, obviously, adding staff costs money, but it's the needs of our kids that are not being met. And the areas of need, mental health, reading and math specialists, special education, and other related services. Again, we've talked about it, about what needs do we have. We absolutely have needs for a licensed clinical social worker, adjustment counselor. We have a definite need for a learning center at the middle, senior, high school. We have them at the other schools in the district, and we have students who will fit and meet the criteria to be in that learning center. Our English language educators, we have 1.5 staff in the district with a growing number. I mentioned speech and language and occupational therapy, again, to meet the needs of their students' IEPs, and reading and math specialists. We look at our iReady data. We pulled the data. Our teachers are doing a great job. We've been successful because we've got great teachers and relatively small class size, but we need those specialist educators to help those students who are most at risk. We've made a commitment, and I've talked to members of the committee, I've talked to the town administrator about this. This is a bigger issue than a right-now issue. This is an issue that we need to address with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. I think, continue to talk about it at our school committee meetings, to see what we can do, how we can help, how we can be involved, how we can pull even more data in to see what we can do to, I think, properly fund and help our kids to the best we can. We've got a great school system. People work really hard, but there's some things we can't duplicate without the bodies. And again, with a proposed potential cut of $222,000, these are cuts that the School Committee can talk about. This is your budget, but these are some things we've put up there. Even from the first day of doing presentations, we talked about a lot of these. The potential of eliminating an elementary STEM specialist position, elimination of two kindergarten instructional assistants, reduction of our elementary reading specialist because we really can't take classroom teachers because there's no, we can't, a class size is, you know, near 30, so we have to cut somewhere. But that's something, obviously, it's a demonstrated need, so something we really don't want to cut, but it's the unfortunate nature of not having a lot to cut. Looking at the elimination of subvariety sports, middle school freshman and JV sports. Look at the elimination of all non-academic extracurricular stipend positions. Again, things that hurt our kids, and we don't want to do that. Reduction of middle, senior, high school department coordinators. Looking at class schedules in terms of teaching periods. We can look at reduction of teachers at the middle, senior, high school. Take away maybe .2 from various teachers because there's not a greater need in terms of class sizes. And the possibility of increase or additional fees within the district, such as increasing athletic fees, creating extracurricular fees, activity fees, bus fees, or increasing parking fees. So none of these make anyone feel good. They're, you know, they all hurt, as we had in one of the slides, that they're all potentially very damaging to our school and to our kids and to our community, but I think it's important to put them out there for discussion because if the cuts go through, then those are the decisions we'll have to make.
And I think that none of us want to see those cuts happen, and so, you know, on behalf of the students and staff in the West Bridgewater School District, the School Committee Superintendent, we ask for your support of this fiscally responsible budget that meets the needs of our students as presented. Any cuts made to this budget will directly affect the education of our students because we will lose teachers as well as academic, athletic, and extracurricular programs.
I know we can answer questions from people who want to call in in our public comment, but does any members of the committee or any members of the audience have any questions right now? Please just have your name.
Sure. Jessica O'Jare. Has there ever been any talk of trying to keep more of the out-of-district students in district? And I know it would cost a fortune, but like, has there ever been like, to add a teach, like, slowly start to bring those, you know, a program into West Bridgewater as opposed to sending students out?
If it's okay, we can have Mr. Marv, we'll also provide information. I, yes, the answer is yes. I think that's part of the reason why the learning center, we want to create that at the middle, senior, high school, so that can, again, continue what we do already with inclusion and keeping students within the district. We've looked, I think, at other programs in the past. Again, we need to have the need, or the program to do it, which will initially cost money, but then it definitely could save money. But Mr. Marv, if you want to add anything?
Yes.
Okay, great question. Obviously, ideally, we all want to keep Obviously, ideally, we all want to keep our students in our district, but because we don't have the programs, we can't keep them in our district. And I think the parents also want their children in our district, from at least all the parents I've spoken to. Again, we don't have the programs for our district. You know, when we were doing this data, I said to Mark, instead of asking us why we need more money, we need to ask how we've been doing it for so long with so little money. So thank you for your question.
That was one of my questions. Another question I had was, do the speech therapists and the OT that you have, do they go to all four schools?
Well, they go to three right now. All right. They do go to, I don't know to talk to you or them. They do go to all four, but that's another concern because the growing need at the high school, they'll have to spend more time up here. So they are being stretched really thin right now, and now we're stretching them further.
So wait, another question before you leave. So I'm a physical therapist, so to see that there are no physical therapists on staff is tragic, I think. Are any of the phys ed teachers adaptive phys ed teachers? Or how are they getting physical therapy, these students that need physical therapy?
We contract out for our physical therapists. We did hire an APE last year, a .6, so they're able to get the APE that way. But for physical therapy, we still contract out.
Okay, which is enough cost.
Which is another cost to the district, yes.
All right. And then I was going to add on to what Mrs. Marvill said, that I've lived in this town for 16 years. One of the reasons I moved to this town was because everyone told me how great the school system was before I even had children. My children have had a great experience in these schools. But how have you, with such a low PPE, how have you been able to do what you've been doing? How have they been able to provide such a great education with so little funds?
I can add, anyone can add, but I said it before, we have great teachers. We really do. We have excellent educators, they're very dedicated, they work extremely hard. And our class sizes are still relatively small. I think those two things together help. Retention of teachers, you know, could be a factor down the road if, you know, again, if they, if there are layoffs or reduction in force, we could lose some of those high-quality teachers. I think for years, going back to Dr. Oss, she's done an amazing job, you know, with the budget, and the school committee has worked very hard to prioritize things. I think it's kind of coming to a head this year with the proposed cut, but I think it's, we've got great kids, we've got great parents and families, and we've got great educators all working together. So I think those are three key things, but there's still needs that we can meet.
Thank you.
Just a quick note on that, too, on the teachers. We have, right now, 48 teachers that are above Step 16, which in the steps, that means they've been here an awful long time. And, you know, we have some retiring that are sitting in the audience with us, but overall, our teachers, once they get here, they stay. And you can see that in our graduation rate, you can see that in what these kids are leaving the school, being confident in. So once we get them here, they've been staying, and now it's, you know, we're trying to keep them here.
Great, thank you.
And I'll also add, I mean, there isn't an employee in the West Bridgewater Public Schools that doesn't do more than one thing. There's, I mean, our roles and responsibilities are, and to say they do two is probably a gross understatement also. And we've been doing this for years, and that's how we have been able to keep the quality of the education up. We've been very creative, and every year we go to the finance committee and we go to the selectmen and we present these things. We present the PPA, we present the, you know, the combination of positions that we come up with to make the budgets work, and we have made it work. And our community does it not only in this school, but you'll see it across the board throughout our community. We're very good at utilizing our resources. Now, the problem is, it does come to a point where, you know, how thin can you make it? And that's a really hard question, and I think this year makes it even harder. I think we definitely need to increase our per pupil expenditure. I just don't know if it's this year. Like, this isn't the year to say, you know, hey, town, you need to step up and, you know, make a major increase in our school budget. Being cut is traumatic. We've never had a cut, in my memory, we've never had a cut for more than $75,000, which that was just last year, and that was really hard to swallow last year. So this amount is something that we've, you know, we've never had to come across before. But, you know, it's tough. We don't come to the finance committee meetings and, you know, not explain this to them. I have a lot of faith in the people that have been elected in our town and appointed in our town, that they're doing their due diligence when they look at this. But, you know, we're in a hard spot this year. This is, we haven't been here before, and it's not good. And, you know, I know the teachers aren't happy with when we've asked, you know, that the town asked that they not take a cost of living increase because that's, you know, it's part of their contract, and that's supposed, you know, we honor contracts, obviously. The school committee honors contracts. We voted for that to be in the budget this year. But I personally also have supported that, you know, Mr. Bodwell's not taking an increase, a cost of living increase this year. So it's a situation where I haven't been in before, where I am actually in favor of two things at the same time. How do you go forward with that? Like, we're in a situation where we haven't been there before. And, you know, the thing I have to compare it to, especially with, you know, because the town definitely took our budget by the cost of living increase, and that's the amount that they took it out. Now, we have a bottom-line budget, so that doesn't mean that's where it comes out, but that's, you know, that's the number that they took. And, you know, I've been thinking about it a lot. And, you know, I relate it to our restaurants in town didn't have people dining, not dining in there because their food wasn't good. They had to close because of the pandemic. You know, our athletic teams didn't forfeit games because the kids did something wrong or they didn't try hard. That's because of pandemic, you know? And that's the same thing here. I don't feel like we're being told, you know, you're not doing a good job here or you've done something wrong. It's because of the pandemic. Now, what we do from here, I find it very difficult to say that I'm not, you know, I support both right now. And then where does that take you for making it work? Because we have to have it make it work with our town. If the people that are elected that have said this is the money they have to give us, am I going to say that that's not the money they have? So it's a tough question.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other members? Yes, Mrs. Smith, yeah. Could you speak at the podium, please?
Now, I think it's important to note that you're only looking to provide level service to the town, the same exact service that you provided this past year. I don't think people understand the effect that losing all sub-varsity sports is going to mean to every kid in this building. It provides so much impetus for kids that might not really enjoy academics, but it sure as heck, and they enjoy sports. In addition to that, reducing teachers in this building, you know, we might, on average, have one smaller class size than the rest, but class sizes aren't small. I think you just need to impress people that you just want to provide the same service you have now. You're not looking to expand anything, and I think that's an important point to make.
I guess then one point of clarification that I would like to hear. Mr. Bodwell or Mrs. Grant, could you just explain to us what level funded means?
I can, again, share the mic.
Hi. A level funded budget means they're going to fund the same dollar amount they did in a previous year. A level service budget means that you're going to provide the same services you did in the previous year. So this year's budget for fiscal year 22, it was pretty much a blend, quite honestly. We were asked to level fund except for step and track changes, except for utility cost increases and some items like that. Basically, it was level, the level funded request was regarding salaries.
Well, service minus cost of living increases in contract is what they requested. Right? So it was like, something they've never asked us for before, definitely.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members? Anyone?
Sure.
Thank you very much for taking my comment. Oh, sorry. My name is Deborah Idell. Some of you know me as I was, I was blessed to be able to work in the schools for two school years as one of your school nurses before. I do have two sons who live in the district. One graduated in 2020, so with our sign on the front lawn and during the middle of the pandemic, and another who will be rejoining West Bridgewater this coming school year to graduate with the class of 22. And I'm here tonight to actually voice my support for the school budget as it is and as it's been presented and voted on and approved by you guys and presented by Mark Bodwell. We have all heard the grumblings in town. You guys are so wonderfully articulate and so kind, it's fascinating. But I got to tell you, like, what people are saying out in town can be vicious. I've heard the grumblings that the teachers and the faculty aren't team players because of their cost of living adjustment that was in their contract, that was agreed upon and signed, and, you know, that, I find that appalling, frankly. I really do. These people have been nothing but team players this entire pandemic. These people are working so hard at home, on their own time, teaching in person, teaching hybrid, trying to build a plane while flying it. And I know a little bit of something about working during this pandemic, if I don't mind my saying. I'm absolutely appalled by people calling them not team players, especially considering I know what they've been through in this past year. These are some of the brightest, most dedicated professionals I have ever worked with in my entire career. That includes healthcare, private sector, and in the school system. These people are actually brilliant. I'm very disappointed that the town has created such a hostile climate for our teachers. This is ridiculous notion of them giving up a quota increase that is, that was agreed upon in their contracts, especially considering the amount of overtime. These people don't get overtime. They don't work an hourly wage. It's not the same as not taking a cost of living increase when you're an hourly employee. Somebody else could get overtime. These people don't. They work at home, they work through dinner, they stay, they go to our kids' activities on their own without even getting paid. I don't even want to be at my activities that much. I honestly, they opted, demanding that they reopen an already settled contract, and then when they opted to wait to vote on it, the town came back at them and demanded they cut exactly the same amount from the budget that was in their cost of living increase? That's outrageous. It's not only outrageous, but frankly, it's spiteful retribution, and that's not acceptable. Bullying should not be acceptable in any department in any of this town. The West Bridgewater can afford to pay its teachers. We can afford to pay our teachers. We don't spend that much money on education in this town. We can afford. And honestly, and this is probably another conversation that I could probably have an annual town meeting this coming week, but I've looked at the other budgets in town, and it's outrageous, the wasteful spending in other budgets in this town, that we could absolutely capture significantly more than $222,000 just from three other town departments alone, never having to touch the schools, police, fire, elder services, or veteran services.
I don't think it's a problem, but that doesn't happen. We don't decide the other.
I know. I'm actually just saying this in support of the teachers, and I'm actually going to probably be bringing this to town meetings, so I'll probably see you there. What I'm doing here is to ask every single parent in this town to show up at town meeting to vote for this budget and to make sure that you are there, because if you support our kids and you support our schools and you support any of our teachers, people will actually be there to vote for this budget. Glad that was funny for some. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Idell. Any other comments? Okay. Approval of policies. Mrs. Hume, Mr. Yo.
Yes. Last month, we talked about opening the policy KF for the community use of school facilities, the athletic fee schedule, and the application for use of the fields. I did talk to Mrs. Grant, and we do need another month to review those, so we'd like to just continue that. And Mr. Yo and Mrs. Grant and I are going to be coming up, and we'll have an update for you, those next month.
Great. Thank you very much. Policies for review. EBCFA face coverings. Mrs. Smith.
Yes. So I wanted to open this policy up because, to make sure that it's still in line with what's going on in the state. And there are some things on here that are not in line with the state that we need to look at. And also, I just think it needs to be reviewed in general, just to make sure that we're following the policy as it's written here. So I'm going to open that up and we can vote on it. There was some question, since it is a COVID policy, if we do still open it and then review it the following month. I don't see anything on here that we have to change immediately, so, I mean, we could, but I don't think we need to, but we do need to get in line with what the state is showing. So if we can open it up and then I'll review it and bring the changes to the next meeting.
Thank you.
And if I may, I think you're right. There's going to be probably a lot like there were last year. We're going to see changes come out, you know, they're happening almost daily, and DESI is making new guideline changes, so it's going to be good to look at these and see where we're at, because by the time we meet again, it will be, you know, first week of June, and then we'll be looking at a lot of different policies, and predominantly probably moving forward to the start of the school year as well.
Yeah. But, I mean, just in general here, like, while outside, if you're physically distanced, the kids can, like, during physical education classes and things like that, take off their masks, and that's in our policy now, but I don't know if that's actually happening, you know, if they want to take off their masks. I mean, they're more than welcome to keep them on. But, you know, just even walking from the building, if they're by themselves, physically distanced, off the property, they can do that, and, you know, that's part of our current policy, so.
Good to review, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to the public comment. Members of the audience.
Wait, we didn't do the warrants.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get right over that. I'm sorry. Warrants, Mrs. Dragonetti.
Sure. The following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year 2021. Bill warrants on April 1st, 2021, for $43,970.80. On April 8th, 2021, for $67,644.75. On April 15th, 2021, for $43,862.97. And on April 22nd, 2021, for $68,974.44. And then we have the following payroll warrants. On April 16th, 2021, for $510,830.45. And April 30th, 2021, for $513,857.95. As always, all warrants are public record and, once signed, are available in the selectman's office for review.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentially can be addressed, cannot be addressed during the public comment. For anyone watching online or on the cable channel who wishes to call in, I believe the call-in number shown is shown there. It is also listed in our meeting agenda, but if anyone needs it, the number is 413-758-2690 and the PIN is 510-008-136. Since there can be a delay in the cable and online broadcast, we're going to pause for about five minutes to give people a chance who want to be heard on a call-in. Okay. So Mrs. Hume has the call-in up, and if we have anybody?
It looks like it's just one person connected via phone.
Okay.
So just give them a minute or two. So, just give them a minute or two.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yep.
Hello, can you hear me?
Are you muted, Donna? Yeah, you're muted. Yes, we can. Could you just state your name, please?
Danae Pope.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Yes, I have a question. Obviously, I noticed the elimination of the elementary STEM special education on a potential budget cut. And so, you know, obviously, a lot of the cuts are teacher-specific. And I don't really hear a lot of comments specifically about maybe eliminating non-instructional positions or, or things. And I would prefer to see cuts at, you know, the athletics level prior to seeing it at the instructional level. And so, I'm just trying to think about how everybody on the committee feels about that as well. And also, where do you stand on supporting the budget? We've heard from Mr. Bodwell, we've heard from Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Dragonetti. So, I was wondering if the remaining members could give us a discussion. Thank you.
I think I could speak for everyone, Mrs. Pope, that we, we all are planning, we are going to support the budget that this, this committee has put forth to the town. There's been no discussion from this committee at all of not supporting our budget one-hundred percent as a committee moving forward. And I'm not sure if anyone else has.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, yep, absolutely.
And I'll answer a question about cutting other than personnel. Our budget is primarily people. That's the, the core of our budget. We, as Mr. Bodwell stated, we don't have extras in our budget. I mean, if you ask anyone that works in the school system, you know, what, what do you think you could cut? Like, what do you have that you don't need? And everyone I talk to says, I, I actually think we could spend more. And I agree with them. So, to say, you know, to cut, we've looked at books before. We've looked at, you know, that, that would, we don't spend more than, I think, five or ten thousand dollars on those things. We've looked at, what was another one recently that, you know, even with athletics, we cut athletics, the junior varsity programs, that cuts sixty-seven thousand dollars. You know, that, that's a substantial amount of money, but that doesn't, that doesn't get us to the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And that impacts a greater number of students than it would if, unfortunately, if you had to cut one position. And so, I mean, I, we don't want to cut anything. We want to increase things. We want to provide additional services for our students. We want to support our teachers and our staff. That's what we want to do. And we didn't ask for this. We also never along the way said that this was based on our performance of anything that people are doing. This is, this is about a pandemic. And, you know, I go back to my example of the athletic teams. I've, you know, you, you can say we can cut them. I think that's, you know, what gets a lot of kids to want to be here and get some involved. And that's not just athletics, it's all activities. And those are things we can't recreate at home for our kids as a parent, you know? I would like to say we also can't recreate the education. But over this past year, we've tried, and, you know, that's something. But, you know, you start taking off, out all those extra things, and that's really, gets on to the social emotional health. And, you know, it was pointed out tonight, like, like, cutting things, it's going to cost us more money down the line. It definitely is. I mean, we, Mrs. Marble, over the past year, from last year's budget to this year's budget, did save the district eighty thousand dollars. No one's really thanking you for that publicly. I mean, we can, we, we see it, we understand it. But, you know, this goes back to, I had, I had a discussion with somebody on, around the Finance Committee. Like, we, when the school combines the curriculum director and the assistant superintendent, or I, you know, that might not be the best example. But when we combine a position and we save sixty thousand dollars over eight years, frankly, no one comes to us and says, thanks for saving four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. But again, it says, it's not just the school department. This is how our town keeps everything we have. I don't know if you guys remember back in, it was over ten years ago, when other towns were closing their libraries, and, and we didn't. We don't make, you know, we don't get rid of things. We really do our best with what we have. So, to, you know, I guess I would ask it back to you, Mrs. Pope. What, what do you think we could cut that's not, uh, something that will directly affect the, the students? Or, you know, I guess if you're in, well, actually, you said it, you said athletics. So, I mean, yes, if we cut the entire athletic program at West Bridgewater, it would save us the two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. And so, we'd have about four thousand dollars that we'd have to figure out, so that, you know. I personally would not be in favor of that, because I believe that's what gets kids to attend school on a regular basis. And it's, it's great for social emotional. But that would, yes, if we cut all of our sports, that would, that would give us the, the amount of money we need.
So, I just want to clarify for technology. I'm not sure that she heard any of that, because you are muted, and there's a delay on the screen.
Oh, so she'll hear it, but delayed.
She'll hear it in a couple of minutes, yeah. Yeah, okay.
I, I think if I unmute, she, it's not going to pick up anybody.
Yeah, it's going to be an echo anyway.
Well, it'll pick up everybody anyway, so.
And we can blame that on the pandemic.
Yeah.
Luckily, we have an excellent technology and TV.
Hello, I don't know if that was a rhetorical question. I don't know if you can hear me, because there's a delay.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, I'm not sure if it was a rhetorical question or not. But it would have been interesting to be able, as a parent, to see the cost of every sport and the number of students impacted, aligned with maybe the positions and the number of students impacted by cuts to those positions. Because people like myself really don't have that level of detail. We don't have that visivity. Obviously, I, I have six generations of West Bridgewater. Grew up there, graduated there. And of course, I know that there's way more sports now than there ever has been. And I fully agree with the fact that we need extracurricular activities in groups and sports to increase our engagement with students. But maybe we need to be more selective. And so, it would be great if we could see that level of detail. So, that's, that's where I was going with it. And I'm, I know I heard Frank, but Mr. Yeo, I, I couldn't hear whether he had any comments about supporting the budget. Thank you so much.
I, I completely support the budget that I voted on at the previous meeting in March. And I still support it. I wish we could give the school more money. But it is what it is, this town wants to cut us. But I support the budget that we had originally presented.
Thank you, Mr. Yeo.
No problem.
Is there anyone else on the call?
Um, no, I don't think so.
All right, well, thank you to Mrs. Pope for calling in. Does anybody else, anybody have any other comments here in the building? Committee, vice, Mr. Bodwell, anybody? Okay. Thank you, thank you for everyone. District-wide, onto our calendar. District meetings, school council meetings. The Howard School is June seventh at two forty-five PM. It is virtual.
Uh, it was canceled, I think.
Oh, it was.
It's listed on the edge.
Is it canceled?
Yeah.
Okay, so that Howard School meeting, June seventh, is canceled. Superintendent's Coffee Hour, May fourteenth, is at nine AM. PTO, May twenty-fifth, at seven PM, at the Roselle McDonald Cafe. Athletic Boosters are June ninth, at seven PM, in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. At the Middle Senior High School, the Junior Dinner, May twelfth, at five PM, in the Middle Senior High School Cafeteria. The Principal's Coffee Hour is May fourteenth, at eight AM. Grade ten and eleven ELA and MCAS, May seventeenth. Grade seven, eight, ten, and eleven ELA, MCAS, May eighteenth. National Junior Honor Society Induction, May nineteenth, at six PM, in the Middle Senior High School Gym. World Language Honor Society Induction, May twentieth, five PM, in the Middle Senior High School Gym. Seniors' Last Day Car Parade and Cookout is May twenty-first. Grade seven and eight Math MCAS, May twenty-fifth. Senior Awards Night, May twenty-sixth, six PM, in the Middle Senior High School Gym. Grade seven and eight STE MCAS, no date on that.
May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh, thank you. Senior Reception is May twenty-seventh, at seven PM. Graduation Night, May twenty-eighth, six PM, at the Robert Dwyer Athletic Field. Athletic Awards Night is June twelfth, six PM, at the Robert Dwyer Athletic Field. At the Howard School, MCAS, grade four ELA is May tenth, math is May thirteenth. Grade five ELA is May eleventh, math May fourteenth, and STEM is May twenty-eighth. Grade six ELA is May twenty-sixth, math is, not, May twenty-seventh. Nature on Wheels, grade six, May seventeenth, eighteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. Grade six is going to visit the Middle Senior High School on May nineteenth. At the Roselle McDonald School, grade three LA, L, ELA, MCAS, is May eighteenth. Howard Transition Tour, May twentieth and twenty-first, nine to ten-thirty AM. Grade three MCAS, May twenty-fifth. Grade three Fail Day, June fourth, eight-thirty AM to eleven. The rain date will be the tenth of June. At the Spring Street School, Individual Pitch is May eleventh and May thirteenth. Our next regular scheduled School Committee meeting will be Monday, June seventh. I believe we're at six-thirty. That's an old time because of Old Town Meeting. Is that correct? We still be at six-thirty?
Yep.
And the, here, in the Learning Commons. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.